Good morning. Why don't we get underway? Is there a new member with us? Do you want to introduce him, Shane?
Sure. So we do have one potential new member. He's not a new member yet, wants to sit in today to talk, you know, to see how everything's going. It's Zach Messick from Evening Sun. He's on the call right now. So we're just going to listen through and see if it's something he wants to join and then maybe next month we'll have him officially. So.
Great. Welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
So first we're going to, are we looking at minutes?
Oh, we didn't. Well, yeah, we got to approve the ones from the previous.
Okay. So these are the March minutes. People have had a chance to take a look at those and any comments or corrections.
I'll second.
On favor.
All right.
So we're on to the 239 review minutes and we have March and April.
Also move.
Second.
Second.
We're doing them together. We're doing.
Up to you.
Let's do them together. Okay. All in favor?
All right.
So we are on to new business and we have presenters from Quidnet Energy. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Shane, staff. My name is Steve Sullivan and I work with Quidnet Energy on communications and community outreach issues. And over the past year, I've been in correspondence with Mr. Roman, keeping him up to speed on the project, but also about talking to come address this body as well as the Town of Oxford Planning Board and the Town of Oxford Town Board. So we're delighted to be here this morning. With me is Richard Brody, who is Vice President of Business Development for Quidnet. Richard actually is brand new, just joined Quidnet last week. If you were around at the time, you'd think we signed Aaron Rodgers. Because Richard is really an all-star in the energy sector and we are delighted. He's part of the team. He has a very strong lineage with UTC, big companies like UTC, United Technologies and Lockheed Martin. But he's also worked with a lot of successful energy storage startups. So he's a real asset to the team. But don't take it easy on him just because he's new. We have to break him in. So also with me is Cliff Mauerner. Cliff is Quidnet's Chief Geologist. Cliff knows more about what's under our feet and underground than we will ever know in our collective lifetimes. Anytime I'm in a conversation with Cliff, I find it fascinating and I learned a number of things and I think you will too. So we have three objectives today. First, we would like to formally introduce Quidnet Energy, the company. Secondly, we would like to introduce the project and describe it to you in detail. And then third, we'd like to entertain and field any questions and answer them, any questions you might have about this. So Richard and Cliff are going to take you through a presentation where we're going to share a screen and if that works for you, we'll get off to the races.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Well, great. Let's see. So Cliff is bringing that up. Just one other thing. I live relatively close by. I'm in the middle of Connecticut near Hartford. So and look forward to being out of the site tomorrow. Although I should say though, I'm here fairly close to New York, but I suspect we have different views on baseball, but that could be a separate. Let's go to the next, let's go to the next slide. Okay. So as I'm sure you're all, you all know, we're engaged in a major national, international effort to address the effects of, to address the effects of climate change and mitigate and mitigate what the, the, the role of carbon in the atmosphere for the future. And there are a number of challenges in decarbonizing the electric grid using renewable energy. And they, they really, they boil down to needing to balance the rapid development of renewable energy. So right now we have a grid or we have had a grid historically that's based on large power plants usually burning fossil fuels, sending, sending power from these large plants over transmission lines to, 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 through distribution grids to load centers. Power flows and the nature of generation are changing drastically. So we're going to have a much more distributed grid where, where, where power is generated. Not necessarily, not, not so much at large power stations, but throughout the grid, both locally and at large stations. And the nature of that, that power is going to be much more intermittent. So in our talking specifically about solar energy and wind energy, which, you know, which are not, which are completely clean, wonderful, but they're not baseload. So there's a big challenge in managing these power flows across the network to minimize, to minimize waste or curtailments and to ensure that the power is always on, which is the second challenge, maintaining grid reliability. You know, it's when you have a, when you have a gas-fired power plant or a coal plant, you can, you know, it's fairly, it's fairly straightforward to store the energy you need to ensure that station can operate. It's a much, it's obviously a much bigger challenge when addressing renewable energy. And that's why there are so many companies developing energy storage. As we do this, we want to electrify the whole economy. So we want to reduce the amount of fossil fuels being used in industrial processes, which further increases demand for electricity. And finally, we want to do all of this in a very resource efficient way. So we want to, we want to optimize not just the, the, the investment in the new capital assets and generation, transmission, storage assets we're deploying. But we want to optimize the use of the existing workforce, the existing infrastructure, existing supply chains, and do it in a way that's, that's cost effective and promotes local economic development to bring everybody along. So those, that's the challenge. It's a multifaceted challenge. It's an exciting challenge and a hard one, but we think it's an achievable one. Nick, please stop me if you have questions. Otherwise I'll just go, I'll go through the slides. Let's go next one, Cliff. So in, in grid decarbonization, kind of managing this new renewables dependent grid really requires a lot of energy storage because energy storage really is the shock absorber that allows you to deal with uneven and intermittent generation of power. New York State has been a national leader in, in the deployment of energy storage. And in the recent Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, set one of the most ambitious goals in the country for the point, for getting to a zero, zero carbon economy. So they want, New York wants to get to 70% renewables by, within this decade, by 2030, and get to a zero carbon grid by 2040. But by the way, that, that beats California out by about five years. California's got a 2045 target. In order to achieve this, there are, there are lots of different estimates for, for what's needed, but there's a, there's a, there's a strong consensus on the need for energy storage and, and huge amounts of energy storage, 1.5 gigawatts of storage by, by the middle of the decade, double that by the end of the decade, and by 2040, at least 15 gigawatts. And one of the key things about this is what's going to be required as we have higher levels of renewables penetration and a lot more energy storage. It's not just more energy storage, but energy storage that can discharge for longer duration and is far more flexible in the way you can cite it and is more durable in the way, in the way you operate it. So current lithium ion technologies, while they'll certainly serve portions of this, are really not adequate to the large challenges. And there's a lot of work on new technologies to address what the grid's going to require. The next slide is. There is, there is a lot of energy storage on the grid right now. But over 90% of that is what's called pumped hydroelectric storage. And New York has, has a number of, of projects where this is done. Pumped hydro just quite simply is, is a method of storing energy by, by pumping water uphill when you have excess power, storing it in a retention pond and then releasing it downhill through turbines to generate power when power is required. A lot of these, a lot of these pump storage projects were developed over the last 40, 50 years to balance nuclear power plants which like to run at steady state and, and had a problem about what to do with their power overnight. And so a lot of pump storage was built for that. But they were also built for other purposes. It's a great technology. It's completely clean. It's relatively efficient. It's reliable at scale. It's quite cost efficient, but it's a really challenged technology. But it's really challenging to expand it or do any more projects. And that's, and that's for a number of reasons. The first is the lack of suitable sites. You basically need mountains or large, large hills. The, the projects themselves take a long time to permit and build typically a decade. They require massive scale. As you can see from these pictures, these are not small projects. Huge capital costs. And as you can imagine, lots of environmental issues that come with doing big disruptive projects like this. So we don't think they're going to be a lot more or really any more big pumped hydro storage projects being built, even though the technology has served the grid pretty well for the past, you know, for the past 40, 50 years. Let's go to the next slide. So what we're doing as Quidnet is we're actually, we're actually doing pumped hydro, but, but in a different way. Rather than pumping water uphill and, and releasing it, we're actually injecting water downhill into, into the surface of the ground, into high pressure rock and then releasing it to generate energy. And this, and so what we do in our, what we do in our process is we have a, is we have a surface, we have a surface installation where we have pumps that, that inject water through, through a wellbore into, into what we call a high pressure storage lens. This is a, this is a, this is a very small fissure that we've created in the rock around 1,000 feet below the, below the surface to store high pressure water. And when, when we're ready to discharge, when the grid needs energy, we release that water and under that high pressure comes to the surface, drives a turbine generating power. This, this technology has a number of advantages as energy storage itself and relative to pumped hydro and other storage technologies. First of all, it's quite modular, scalable. You can do it in really in multiple combinations of, of power and energy. And it's especially suited to this longer duration technology you need. It's scalable. It's terrain independent. You don't need a mountain. You can do it, you can do it on flat ground. You can do it just about, just about anywhere if the geology is suitable. The costs are highly attractive, less than half the cost or substantially even lower than that of batteries and pumped hydro. As I said before, a broad geologic footprint and we depend on a mature supply chain. So we don't have to build new factories. We don't have to, we don't have to manufacture large amounts of chemicals for batteries. Instead, we can use the existing oil and gas drilling and exploration infrastructure and the workforce, the oil and gas workforce that's associated with that. So another key advantage of our technology is we help the workforce, all the workforce associated with, with drilling, drilling and production to transition from a fossil base, fossil based work to fossil fuel based work to the clean energy economy. Next slide. As I said before, the, we, there are a number of advantages of the technology over, over incumbent technologies. I think I've already gone through the advantages versus pumped hydro. As you, as you, as you read the news, you're hearing about a lot of projects going in with large scale lithium ion batteries for energy storage for the grid. This is being driven by the tremendous expansion and lowering of cost of lithium ion batteries for, for the automotive industry. And while these batteries are good for smaller scale and lower duration applications up to about four hours of energy storage, they really don't scale well for longer durations, like the 10 hours or more that we're doing due to cost and durability as well as reliability and safety concerns for batteries where there's a risk of fire. Batteries whose capacities degrade as you use them. I'm sure everybody has experienced this with their cell phones and the general scalability of the technology. And of course, you know, versus gas peakers, there's no combustion. So we meet, we meet carbon goals. And we don't, and it's a standalone, it's a standalone project. All we need is a connection to the local distribution grid. We don't need to be connected to gas pipelines and we can be, we can be remotely operated. I think one more slide for me. Cliff, there we go. Just a word about the team. I joined the team about, I joined the company at the beginning of May. And I'm really, and one of the reasons I joined it was it's a great team. And it's, it's a really great, it's a great team composed of experts in the field from kind of both things you need. So, you know, first of all, looking at the technical expertise, it's, it's a great collection of people who have outstanding expertise in, in the subsurface, in the subsurface engineering and the, and the, and the top side technologies needed to realize this, this technology, people from the oil and gas industry, people, people with, with, with experience drilling and doing the geological subsurface work, people and people with the right experience on mechanical top side of the system. And the team also composed of experts in, in the markets and in project development that's needed to bring projects to, to, to fruition that benefit their, both their investors and the local communities. So I'm really excited about that and supported by very high quality investors. So both, but environmental, environmental funds, venture capital and venture capital funds, including a Breakthrough Energy Ventures, one of the leading, one of the leading clean tech venture capital funds, supported by a number of, of well-known people, including, including Bill Gates, who has, who has been, become quite a champion of our company in his, in his public speaking. So that's, that's the introduction to the company. I think that's, those are all the slides I have. But let me, let me pause and see if, if the board has any questions for me. We can also take questions at the end.
I do have one question. There must be residual natural gas coming up along with that water at some point. What happens with that?
Well, we actually choose locations where, where, where there, where there aren't hydrocarbons. As a matter of fact, if there are hydrocarbons or other contaminants, it makes it difficult to do what we do. And in addition, the way we, the way we drill and, and cement the wells should prevent the migration of any kind of gases or liquids to the surface. But I'm going to, I'm going to hand it over to Cliff, who is the expert on that question.
Thank you. That's, that's a very good question. And I think there's, there's a few different answers to that. So two things, first and foremost, in oil and gas technology, that's an extractive industry. So they operate at a net negative pressure. So they're extracting things from the subsurface. We operate at a net positive pressure. So we're actually storing, pumping underground and storing. So the, the way that we pump our water underground is such that even if there were natural gas migrating over the course of an asset, which could be 30, 40 years, we wouldn't see that come into our storage reservoir. And then the second set is that the way that we operate compared to oil and gas is we touch a much smaller footprint in the subsurface. So once we create our zone, we are operating in that same zone and not going elsewhere and being exposed to new formations that could contain natural gas. But in the testing process, that's something that we vet out. And we, we monitor every time we cycle fluids from methane and epic acids.
And Cliff, this might be well illustrated as you get into your next couple of slides too.
We'll, we'll jump into those. So Richard, thank you for walking through the business case and I'll spend a little bit of time talking about our operations now. So today, the company is primarily working with governments across North, North America to develop this geologic storage resource. In particular, starting on the left, New York, we know it's on an aggressive pathway to decarbonization. And with that, as Richard mentioned, we need tens of gigawatts of not just energy storage, but long duration energy storage. And that means new technologies coming to market. So for our unique geologic energy storage resource, we think that we have a capacity significantly larger than what's required by the system operators. And for those reasons, we were contracted by both NYSERDA and the US Department of Energy to begin characterizing and demonstrating the capabilities of this geologic resource just off of State Route 12, south of Oxford. So elsewhere, we're also working in Texas and Ohio where we see a similar geologic resource at a similar scale. Both of these regions have a number of retiring coal and natural gas assets. And they're in need of a flexible energy supply to continue showing grid stability as we transition from a fossil economy to a greener economy. I think one recent example of this is Texas, where if you all remember the news back in February, I sure do because I live down here. The entire grid nearly collapsed because renewables weren't generating and coal and natural gas plants weren't properly winterized because we don't believe in winter down here. We definitely need a more flexible energy supply going forward. Elsewhere, just north of us in Alberta, we're working with the government to help address some congestion restraints that they've got. They have a focus of renewables, solar and wind in the south of the province, and they need to be able to get that up to load centers in the cities like Toronto and Edmonton. So we're focusing on that. And then in California, we're in the process of prospecting and planning. So for long duration storage projects there, as Richard mentioned, they're a few years behind in their green energy plans compared to, to New York. But we're ready to get work in there later this year too. So now that we've covered this, the range of projects, I'm going to zoom in a bit to New York and what we're doing here. And that's our NYSERDA project, which boils down to two major components. The first is, is characterizing the resource. And then the second is developing the first generation of the commercial application of the resource. And by the way, what we, we call it is geo-mechanical pump storage, or maybe you'll hear me say GPS for short because that's, it's kind of a mouthful. So starting on the left with resource characterization, the first step is we have to identify rocks that are ideal for our storage. And that means to us, rocks that don't leak. And here in New York, we see that abundantly across the southern tier. And you can see that in all the counties outlined in gray on the left, in a particular, our first project here in Chicago County, outside of Oxford. And we think with that broad of a footprint, this technology really has the chance to be a game changer for communities across the state because it can be deployed across the region and bring wide scale economic development with it. So after we characterize the resource, what's the next step? That's resource development. And that's what we're here to talk about today. And that begins for us with a test well. And we use that test well to characterize the storage resource and then to build a development model based on how the rocks respond to our technology. So on our site in Oxford, for example, the first step that we do is we confirm storage pressure. And that's what we've seen at this test site is that that's comparable to some of the largest pump storage facilities in the country. We benefit from having not hundreds of feet of head of water, but hundreds of feet and thousands of feet of rock. So we really increase our energy density there. Secondly, we conduct water cycling and that characterizes the hydraulic performance and the efficiency, which is key to our technology. And it demonstrates our ability to improve both the performance and the efficiency with engineering principles. And then finally, we're sampling our water continuously across all of our water cycles to ensure that it meets our freshwater quality requirements. And the interim results are that this has been a success in the region. We think that we can operate at twice the energy density of a pumped hydro facility. And then aside from that, the technical results that we look for in a test well, there's other critical components. And those are working with local support networks and working with our local regulatory agencies. So here in New York, that means we're working hand in hand with EPA and the New York State DEC to ensure that what we're doing, our operations are safe and not detrimental to the environment. So now that we've talked about that a little bit, I want to zoom in specifically to, to the Oxford well. And to begin, so what we did is we screened wells across the state, trying to identify specific wells with really high construction standards. And we chose this particular well, that was an inactive gas well, because it's got really high quality steel casing and cement, which work together to form a seal between the rocks and the wellbore. And that, that's relevant in all drilling industries, but so much more so to Quidnet than to oil and gas. So in this particular well, the image on the left, when we took it over, it was an inactive gas well. And it's got three layers of steel casing and cement, which protect the, the first one, the surface casing that protects from the freshwater zone. The secondary casing protects over our intervals of interest. And then the deeper production casing, that isolates the deeper gas bearing intervals from everything further up hole. So what we did to convert that from an inactive gas well to a geo-mechanical storage well is we constructed two major ceiling barriers between the, the lowest gas testing interval, which is around 5,000 feet and the areas that we're looking at, which is 1 to 2,000 feet. And those plugs are a combination of cast iron and cement. So we have significant barriers there separating us from the gas intervals and any unconventional intervals that oil and gas operators could target in the future.
Yeah, just for a second there, Cliff. Shane, does that better answer your question now that you see this picture?
Yes.
And, and once again, sorry if I'm flying through this, but feel free to stop me for questions or we, we've got a couple more to go. And then happy to take questions at the end too. Okay. So after we convert the well from the inactive state into a storage well, that leaves us with a portion of the well that we're operating in, where I've highlighted the, the storage zone in the image on the right. Specifically that isolates us from the freshwater zone where we've got two layers, the steel surface casing and cement and the secondary steel casing and cement protecting our zone from the freshwater zone above. And then we've got thick layers of ceiling rocks above and below that separate us from the freshwater zone and the nearest unconventional target, which would be the Marcellus Formation and all of the much deeper conventional oil and gas targets. Okay. So I think what's, what's really important to people here is, is knowing, so what are we pumping underground? And that's freshwater that we source from a local municipality. And we know that in the future, we do plan on operating these assets with water wells or by sourcing freshwater from nearby surface bodies. But for the time being, the easiest permitting pathway is, is to get freshwater from a local municipality. And what are we doing with that? So we're pumping it underground. What's happening with it? Well, we pump it into what we call our storage zone or our storage lens. And we know that it's, it's staying in that zone because we've got a number of really unique monitoring devices that we have on the surface and downhole to, which basically monitor pressure and fluid movement so that we know the water that we're placing is staying where we think it's, where we, where we put it in the first place. Okay. In addition to, to that water, we do have some additives that we use from time to time at different steps in the process. And the reason we use those is we're targeting really low porosity and permeability rocks. But occasionally we add some non-hazardous additives to further reduce the permeability. And then also because we're cycling this up and down to the surface, we need to be able to maintain freshwater quality. So a few examples of those would be clay, salt, water absorption granules and water purifiers. And then in addition to, to maintaining freshwater quality, how do we know that? It's because we're testing it every time we cycle and we're testing regularly for the boring stuff, which is particulates, solids, salinity. And then the, the more serious things which methane and radiation, all of which we report to our regulators as we know that we have to maintain fresh quality or farm pond quality water to reach commercial success. To, to operate an asset like this at a commercial scale, we need to be able to store water in a pond as opposed to a multi-acre steel tank. And I know that's, that's a critical point that many of you are worried about and it's paramount to our company. And that's maintaining fresh quality water throughout the lifecycle of a Quidnet project. Okay. And just to finish up, what's, what's next? So the next steps for the company in New York State is first, there's more testing. We need to further characterize the resource and that means testing different storage capacities and in different regions across the state. We believe the rocks are suitable across a broad range, but that doesn't mean that a test in Oxford is going to validate everything everywhere. So we want, we want to get a few more tests as well. And then as we characterize the rock, we also want to look to understand different development pathways to grow this technology commercially in the state. And then we want to build on positive foundations with regulators and then with communities as well to make sure that we're doing this the right way for all parties. So what does that mean for our relationships across upstate? That means partnering with landowners as we've done here and with communities that we work in to develop the resource. That means working with utilities and power developers in the region to, to spot these things where they need to be. And that means hopefully in the long run, increasing economic activity here through sustainable long-term development. And that is, that is all we had today.
Can you just go back a second, Cliff, for one second? I just want to point out, this is a rendering of what a typical facility would look like, just so you get a sense.
What formation are you targeting?
Could you repeat that?
What formation are you targeting?
Currently the Genesee Shale, the lowermost upper Devonian section. Currently, the Genesee shale is the lowermost upper Devonian section.
My question is, is there a net energy gain? Certainly, it's going to take energy to pump the water down. Is there any net gain for this? When the the water is released to produce electricity?
Richard, would you like to take that or or I can?
Oh, I can take it now there there there's as with all storage systems, there's a net energy loss. Because energy is lost through both, in this case, through through thermal and mechanical means. In a battery, you're losing, you're losing energy through like electrochemical and essentially electrical means. Our round trip efficiency is going to be somewhere between 65 and 70%, which is comparable to other long duration energy storage technologies.
So the idea is if there's excess energy on the grid, we we see this all the time in in Texas and and sure to be happening across the US is these things like wind farms can price it at negative prices. So instead of selling for negative dollars, they could send those electrons over to Quitnet. And we give them back 70 cents on the dollar when when the grid needs it or when they need it.
Can you talk a little bit about the economics of this? Is your primary customer a utility then? And then the utility would pay you, the utility passes the cost on to the consumer?
Yes, I can I can talk to that. So there are there are a number of models for this. We could, we could, we could build and own the project and and sell and sell services to the to the local utility under what's called a power purchase agreement. And that's very common in the industry, typically these PPAs, as they're called, go for 15 or 20 years. We could build a system and sell it to the utility and the utility can can own and operate it as part of its system. Either either for the purpose of supplying of 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 managing its electric, of supplying electricity itself, or the purpose of using it to help relieve congestion on its distribution and transmission grid or or both. A third option is for us to build it and and sell it to a third party, but what's called an independent power producer that would contract, that it would either contract with the utility under a long term contract or sell the or sell power onto the grid in what we call merchant operations, basically selling it according to the to the real time market.
And what kind of approvals do you need before you can actually do a full scale setup like the one we see depicted there? You mentioned DCs involved, who else would have to give your approvals?
So the overarching, the the different facets of the project, but generally there's the subsurface, the the top side engineering and then the interconnection. So the interconnection that would run through the the utility, the the top side, actually all of that falls under. So the DEC is is a broad umbrella. So there's a number of different organizations that or or silos within DEC. And then our top side facilities, so emissions, noise, the the pumps and turbines that would all fall under the state. And then there's, of course, county and in town jurisdiction when we get to construction of our of our pump house. And then in the the subsurface, that's a combination of the EPA and the DEC. The EPA regulates anyone that that pumps anything underground and the DEC regulates well construction as well.
So just to reiterate, what you said is that this project isn't necessarily meant to create energy. It's meant to store energy on a cheaper basis at night in order to provide it when it's more needed during the day.
Generally, yes. I'm sorry, could you repeat the question? It was hard to hear.
Just wondering about employment. The site we see depicted on the screen, would there, how many people would be employed there, if any? So through the construction process, so an asset, a Quitnet asset, we expect to be able to last 30 to 40 years through the construction process. That's dozens. So that's from the, we we've got manufacturing of the top side equipment, which currently is taking place in Albany. As the first generation of what we're building there. And then we've got people throughout the region supporting the the drilling and the testing. And then we we've got surveying, site engineering. So we're bringing in diverse groups, so not just oil and gas field workers, but people across the the construction pipeline. And throughout the life of an asset, we would have regular maintenance on these. And and that would, each one of these sites would require several people to be able to get out there somewhat routinely for for maintenance. But most of this is actually, after it's constructed, we're able to monitor it remotely. So there would be a sort of a central command where we've got all the sensors that we're monitoring everything that's happening with all the fail safes. And if anything were to be triggered, then we've got someone within, you know, it would be a 30 to 45 minute drive to be able to get out there. ASAP after we we set in the fail saves and shut things down. But it's each one of these sites is is dozens to to hundreds across the life of the project.
And and will, again, we're going to maintain multiple sites in a region, so it have a permanent operations and maintenance staff in that region.
Sure. Thanks. So I'm Carrie Green, I'm president and CEO of Commerce in Nango. We also have the Shenandoah County IDA under our umbrellas, we work closely with planning. So my first question is, is there a decommissioning plan that you have in place for these sites?
Yes, so that that all falls under, the the regulators definitely know what they're doing up there. So to be allowed to commission a project, you already have to establish your decommissioning plan. There's there's an issue across the US specifically with operators leaving their wells and putting that on the state. And and normally, I would say the the state governments, I trust more to regulate something than the the federal government. But the EPA actually is, they're the only ones really protecting the landowners. So we've got a full bond, so you have to go out and get a number of bids on what it's going to cost to decommission the facility. You pick what you think is reasonable one, the EPA decides, yes, we agree. And that's the amount that you have to post with the EPA for the duration of the project. So that's, we do have that in place. And then, secondly, yes, we we've got a plan for the lifecycle of the project. It's very state dependent. So we think a number of the things that that we build will be assets to landowners. We know at the end, they don't care to see a wellhead, so all of that gets removed. You can recycle the steel and and most everything that's downhole. And then you plug and abandon it per per state and per EPA regulations. You have the ability to to this pump house, it's it's more or less a metal barn. That's something that depending on the landowner and then the state regulator, that that can remain, all the equipment, of course, you know, we would decommission and take off site. And then generally, a farm pond always adds quality to a farm. So we have operations where the landowners definitely want the pond at the end of life. And we, of course, have to test these ponds regularly, the water and the containment to to make sure that there's nothing untoward happening there. But that that asset could either be removed at the end and and returned to grade or it could be left there to to provide something to to the farm.
Okay, and that decommissioning bond would follow the project if you were to sell to a third party?
Yes.
Okay, good. That's something we've been requiring with pilot programs related to energy, solar energy. So that's fairly newer, so I'm glad to hear that you're you're all over that. The other question I had was, and you might be away from this a bit, but will you be looking to get any kind of a pilot program, either a short one from the local municipality or coming to the IDA for a longer one?
Yeah, I think where we're at now, we're an experimental, we're classified as an experimental technology. So as you can see, we're kind of in the state that wind was when people were around the state putting up meteorological towers. Our goal is to move to full commercialization. In other words, be selling to one of the, through one of the routes that Richard described in the near future. And that's really, we think, when that all kicks in, when we'd be talking to you about a pilot is when we're generating revenue at that point, which is hopefully not too far away.
Thank you.
And I've noticed you've carefully avoided the word hydraulic fracturing. But I know what you're going to do, so you're going to create fissure. Will that be a bone fracture or how many gallon fracture you you use to that? I'm just curious, I know something about the industry, so just answering those questions.
So, you know, one thing that that we we know and we expect, you know, throughout the process, working up here is that high volume hydraulic fracturing for oil and gases banned. So we're definitely not doing that. That's that's an extractive technology and then we're not an extractive technology. So what what we do is we we we're pumping water underground. So today, that is freshwater that we're getting from the village of green. And and we we start at at very small scales, so on the order of potentially gallons, you know, a few gallons at a time to get some rock data. And then we expand that. And then the the commercial footprint of a well like this would be significantly larger. So the the well that we're looking at here in the picture, that's, we're talking 10 to 20 acre feet that that we would have underground and then we would be cycling half to a third. It very much depends on the pressure and then then how the rocks respond. But a subset of that up and down the well and into the pond.
Other questions? Oh. How large of an area of private wells will you be monitoring?
The private water wells?
Yes.
So currently, we've got with the EPA, one mile area of review and one quarter mile that we are doing water well testing. And then that's just for this, you know, as Steve mentioned, this is an experimental technology. So every region, every rock, the the mechanics of it are different. So we're learning how the rocks respond here. And that is significantly, so we think that's about two and a half times the footprint of what we expect to be doing at at the particular Oxford well as we switch to. And and one thing that we haven't really harked on here, it's probably a bit too technical, but oil and gas, it's a lot of hand waving, people don't really know what's happening because it's so deep underground. Luckily, in in the depths that we're working at, we're right at the very lower limit where we can use really, really sophisticated monitoring techniques that most not carbon capture, most no one else can use. And these things pick up earthquakes, we have a seismometer as well at the site. But we we can pick up earthquakes in Kamchatka, we can pick up the tides, 20 different lunar tide signatures that we have to parse out of this to be able to monitor what's happening underground. But we we get a really clear picture of what's happening underground. And we we base the area review off that. And and today, that's that's a quarter mile for for water wells, which we test prior to the project, during the project, after the project. And then the the number of times during the project, that's more or less dependent on the DEC. But we've been doing that a few times now. And then as we grow to to the image you see here on the right, to a commercial scale, that area of review will be fully dependent on the storage capacity of the well. So we talk in in scales of megawatts. So there's different scales of wells based on what's needed in the area. And what we think the rock can deliver, therefore, the the water well area of review would would change with storage capacity.
Other questions?
Hi, can you tell me how many wells that you have tested in the area that are located next to this? And how much noise this is going to make after it's completed and what it's going to look like after it's completed? And also, is the project going well? I've heard that there's been some pressure releases underground that maybe it's not doing so well. And how long will they keep drilling?
Okay, so and 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 jump in if if I fail to address one of those questions. But so what what this is going to look like commercially is sort of the image that you see on the right where basically everything inside of that, what we call a pump house or or looks like a metal barn. Those will be all the noise generating pieces of equipment, specifically the pump and the turbine. What we expect this to be at at property boundaries is is on the order of somebody mowing a lawn. And basically dissipates to background noise at the time you get to a property boundary. So that was, that was part of the environmental assessment, the EAF that we had to go through as part of Seeker with the DEC. So that's something that, as the geologist, I'm not, you know, spit firing the exact decibel levels or horsepowers. But that's that's something that that was part of the project approval. And then we've, so it's how many water wells we've sampled in this area?
Yes.
Okay, that is on the order of, I think, probably a half dozen water wells. And then we also have to monitor freshwater ponds or any tanks that are in the ground. So we've we've done that as well. And that's reached out to every landowner within that whose parcel touches that quarter mile acreage. And then any any water well that they have or farm tank within that vicinity, we sampled. And then plenty of that data, we've actually reported back to the landowners because they're they're interested to see what's going on with their water wealth. And then as as far as what's going on with this particular well. So the way that we do things is we we test things sequentially to to get rock properties. So the the first entry into into a state and basically the first entry into a county, what we would do is, as I mentioned, there's a a series of tests where we can pump a gallon or a few gallons of water to see how the rock responds. The data points that we get from that tell us whether or not we think the zone would be suitable for our technology. And if it's not suitable, then we move up. In locations where there's not that many layers of steel and cement, you could start at the top and and have your success, you know, first up and and then go test things deeper. But with the fact that this well is is fully cased and cemented from the top to the bottom, then we need to start from the bottom and go up. So tested zones that have not been successful. And now we're operating in a zone that has been successful and then we're really excited about.
So when you go to these different zones, doesn't that push out farther into different areas?
No, so we're we're starting, the the largest footprint that we'll have will be with the the zone that we end up, you know, operating in and cycling regularly. So we we cycled in in other zones and we we know the the footprint there. These are in generally maybe the same name formations or they have different names depending on how how detailed you get. But as we're we're moving up sequentially, multiple hundred feet at a time.
Is there a way to find out what wells you've tested?
Is there a way to find out which water wells we've tested? Yeah, I I would need to to check in on that and that's very likely something we might be able to provide.
Yeah, I would like to be able to have a list, please. I live right, I live close by to this. And also with the noise and what it looks like. I'm hoping that the noise is always going to be at night, correct?
So these would operate, as Richard mentioned, there's a number of different ways to do things currently. We're we're only operating during the day. But as as Steve has also mentioned, this is an experimental well up here. So we, you know, we're aware of what it looks like and it's nothing near what a what a commercial facility is going to look like. If if you drive out there, you're you're not going to see this this bucolic scene. But this is, this is what an operating asset looks like is.
Yeah, I understand, it looks like I see a whole bunch of tanks and a pond and a a big drilling rig and and hopefully it'll be out of there soon and look better.
Yeah, let me comment, so let me, is there a concern presently about noise?
Yes, I've already called you guys once.
Okay, I mean, it's associated with the drilling operations, right?
Yeah, right now you're kind of quiet there, but.
Yeah, so so once, so that though that noise is associated completely with the construction of the asset at the beginning. So once, once we're, once we're done constructing the the site, the only noise there will be from the site will be from the the turbine and the the pumps and the turbines, which are going to be inside a shed. If there are noise concerns for the local communities, that that shed can be can be insulated further for sound. So that's something we would certainly pay attention to, but the the initial noise from the drilling operations is a temporary thing.
Do you know, do you know what the decibel is going to be once it's running?
We can get back to you on that, Cliff. And and remember the way the way decibels are measured, so it's decibels at site and then decibels at property boundary. We we can get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Sure.
And when when we leave you, we'll we'll flip to the final slide. So it's got contact information that you can you can pose these questions to as well.
And I should, I should say, in contrast to to oil and gas exploration, to to hydraulic fracturing that's conducted, first of all, at much, much greater depths, it's in their interest to to really maximize these fractures, right? So they can extract as much as possible. We're completely the opposite. It's in our interest to to ensure that what the the fissures that we create do not propagate so that we can get a, so that we can get a very solid storage lens and the water stays where we put it. So it's very much in our interest to ensure that that not that 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 the rock stays tight, that that none of the water propagates and that and that and that the the lens stays exactly to the spec, the specifications that we've engineered it to.
So the, when you fill the pond, originally you fill it with municipal water?
No, not at at a commercial scale. So this is, we we first introduced ourselves to to the D E C just over two years ago. And we were looking to balance a few things. And that was, we want to get in and be able to test this technology. The state's got really aggressive goals, and we we really do think that this could be a great place for us to operate. But at the same time, we know there are certain things that just aren't feasible for for a test well. So to commission a pond like this, that's what we're going to do every single time for a commercial facility. But that would be probably a two-year process at this point. So it was significantly cheaper and more feasible to be able to to do this by sourcing water from municipality. But in no way would we expect to fill a pond like this. And unless we're right next to a a tie into a municipality. But we would be sourcing either from groundwater or surface waters. And that's sort of overseen by EPA, the D E C and the Susquehanna River Basin Commission as well. So we got a a triple threat there.
And 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 remember again, there's the initial charging of the pond, the initial filling of the pond. But then, but then when the, while the facility is operating, the the only replenishment we're going to need is is to compensate for evaporation, which which itself will be partially compensated by rain.
Yeah, I don't know if we've underscored this, but this is a closed-loop system. So as Richard says, the only loss is due to the evaporation of the pond.
But you'll then get it from the river?
I'm sorry?
The question was that you originally get it from the river then to fill a big pond like that? Because like, that's what they do down in Pennsylvania for the fracking up out of Susquehanna.
It would very much depend on on the project location. So we're held to, we're not oil and gas. And oil and gas and geothermal are not held to the same standards that we're held to. So we've we've got significantly more stringent requirements on the water that we pump underground. So we would only be able to source from a surface water. If we can't, there's there's ponds on the property here that we wouldn't be able to source water from because it's, you know, significantly too high particulates. So it would have to be fresh quality water that we were sourcing that that needs more requirements than an oil and gas operation. Or what we've done at all of our other sites is is we source groundwater over a period of time. So during the construction process, there would be some water most likely trucked in as we're, you know, building our water wells and we're starting to fill the pond. But these things don't need to get filled overnight. They can get filled over time because it it takes a bit of time to to drill complete and then commission a facility.
And and again, to emphasize, the amount of water that we require is vastly less than the amount of water required for oil and gas production. In oil and gas production, it can be, you can be putting ten barrels of water in the ground to get one barrel of 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 oil out of the ground. We're just nothing, nothing like those volumes. And and as we've said, it's just the charging of the pond at the beginning. And then for forty years, it's it's pretty much steady state with some with some compensation for evaporation.
That's all controlled by the Susquehanna River Basin Commission.
Exactly.
All about the room controls that are linked with you.
So other questions or presenters? We should wrap up. We appreciate your coming today. Excellent presentation. We appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you for having us. There's I would recommend that anyone who wants to find out more, a very easy way to do that is at quidnetenergy.com. Our website really lays out the whole process, pretty much what we've talked about here in simple to digest format. But also here, we've listed my Quidnet email as well and phone number. If you need to follow up with somebody, I can, I can find the person and make that happen. We're all about making sure we have good two-way communication. So please don't hesitate to reach out at any point.
And Steve, do you want to talk about tomorrow night?
Uh, yes, and we will be at the Town of Oxford Board Meeting tomorrow evening at seven thirty. Mr. Roman has invited the Town of Oxford Planning Board as well. So we're going to present in a joint meeting and are excited to do that as well. So after a long hiatus because of preventing us from doing this from COVID, we're very excited to be out and meeting our neighbors and host community.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time today. We really appreciate it.
Thank you all. George, I'm curious, what what role does the county have in regulating the city?
I don't think so. Well, I think at the state level, there there may be some changes because as part of this year's budget, the state is creating an energy office under the Department of State. So I would not I would imagine that that department is going to be involved more directly with this.
Is your code enforcement going to be involved at all, structures or anything like that?
I think it may be involved with the committing for buildings of certain sizes and so forth.
Right, right.
And and that's probably a topic that has to be discussed at our level as far as whether or not there's going to be any permitting or things that would be required. Sure. Yep.
Well, why don't we move on then? And our next item is the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
So right now, the Hazard Mitigation Plan is a draft. It is on our county website. There's comments. I believe you can still do comments for another week or two, I think. But if you go to the county planning website on the left-hand side, click on Hazard Mitigation Plan, you can submit comments still. Other than that, that's it for the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Hopefully, we'll have that wrapped up sometime in the next couple of months. Transportation. Transportation, still kind of slow. We don't have our contract yet. I hope to have that by this Thursday when we bring it to committee to have it approved. Otherwise, you know, I get there is still doing transportation to all COVID vaccinations for anybody that's in need. There's doing the Transportation to Employment Program. They will be presenting tomorrow at the Talent Pipeline with Commerce Shenango. They will be one of the sessions. So if you want to hear more about the Transportation to Employment Program, they will be doing a presentation then. Carrie would have to tell me what time because I do not remember.
Oh, hang on one second. I've been staring at it all day. You'd think I would know. I want to say it's early afternoon, like twelve thirty, maybe.
Yeah, I think it is. It's in the afternoon, but.
That's right. I'd be really amazed at myself. I think I have to hold it right now.
That's a free, you know, session, you know, free tomorrow. So Carrie can plug it later.
Twelve thirty to one thirty. Yep, it's free to register, free to attend. It's on our website.
So they will be talking about transportation employment. Otherwise, that's it for transportation at this point.
Okay. Airport?
Airport, we did a presentation yesterday with a tour for the planning committee. So we had some of them, we had, what, five supervisors up there yesterday, taking a tour of the facility, seeing what we have up there. All that good stuff to talk about it. We do have a grant application I just submitted yesterday to A R C to renovate the admin building. We do have an application already standing with D O T. Hopefully, we'll get word on that to renovate the jet hangar. So hopefully, if we get both grants, we'll have approximately just under a half million dollars to renovate both those buildings. And crossing our fingers, no local share. I mean, there's never a local share because we have the trust, but it'll be hopefully no trust money will be used for that.
So what kind of renovations?
So the jet hangar currently, a lot of the ceiling tiles are falling. Obviously, when you have expensive aircrafts in that facility, it's not ideal to have falling stuff at all. A lot of the concrete block you can see through, not exactly the greatest for energy. But really, the airport, what we're trying to do is find a fixed-based operator to operate a business out of that airport. And that is the, that's the location where they would be unless they built their own facility. So to market a fixed-based operator with a facility that, you know, has holes in the walls, lighting is not that great, windows are covered, you know, doesn't show what we wanted to show. So, yeah, that would be a, to renovate, that would be around, the jet hangar itself is around two hundred and sixty-three thousand. The admin building currently be around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Like I said, we're hoping that we'll get both those grants and then there will not be any draw against the trust.
So probably, three years ago, we did it, two thirty-nine, and Upstate was going to do some renovations there. That all kind of went by the wayside.
Yeah, Upstate had talked about doing hangars in various airports and none of them ever happened.
Okay, next time, just go in.
Okay, um, so we're moving ahead with the community campaigns, which are the solar and the TV bullying campaign. So we'll have our launch event for both of those coming up like end of May and we'll begin promoting them on public on Facebook page, social media. So just watch out for that. And then we receive initial estimates for electric vehicle charging stations here in the county. And we'll be having a follow-up meeting Friday with I N F associates to go over all those estimates and the breakdown of what the cost would be for very different locations.
Yeah, the locations.
Yeah, um, so the first one is the Northeast Classic Farm Museum. And then the second location is the back parking lot here at the county. And the third location is anymore, so.
And that's not to say that those are going to happen necessarily. We've got to still go through all the funding and all that stuff. But those are the sites that we've done site business with. So we'll see.
The only other one in the county, I'm aware, is in Sherburne, right? What if Carrie talked about the program tomorrow and we'll move on to Steve?
Sure, thank you. Um, we are hosting a all-day, it's a first-time summit. It's called Talent Pipeline and Population Recovery Strategy Summit. It's a day full of sessions. We have some group sessions, some breakout sessions, all around workforce development, retention, attraction of, you know, what we always talk about, right, attraction of the young professional. One of, I'm I'm excited about many of the sessions. One of them in particular is Perry Dewey from Bosie's is hosting a session with students. And it's going to be an opportunity for our, everyone who's paying, it's, you know, listening and participating to hear what the next generation thinks about our community. What, you know, when they're thinking about in terms of like where they make their life and what they're going to do, you know, what do they think about Shenango County? What do they think about the businesses and the industries that make us up? But we have a lot of wonderful speakers and we were so thankful that Shenango Health Network and Preferred Visual were able to sponsor this event for us. So much so that we were able to offer the event complimentary. So originally, there was going to be a fee to attend, but now it's no charge. You just have to register to attend. We're going to send a link out this afternoon with the full agenda, with the meeting links for all the sessions. So whether you just can come to a few or the whole day, you know, you're welcome to drop in. The day starts at eight thirty and it ends about three forty-five. But if you go to commerceshenango.com or if Shane is willing, I can forward him the latest update and he can send a link to the group.
That's right. Thank you.
Steve?
Still working with Morrisville.
Steve, Steve, Steve.
Still working with Morrisville, but they've moved slower than dirt, I swear. They love to do studies and they love to take things that are already existing and and study them again. But we're working with Magny, working with Unison still and Valerie over at Shabati, right, to do some kind of a program. And we may deliver that actually at the Unidilla Valley School because we're still running into trouble with transportation, like people don't want to drive long distances, take these classes. Oxford has put together their fab lab. They've got all the equipment on order. That was designed by a group called Ties and paid for by Stevens. And they're going to open that up to the community so that you have almost a maker's space available. I was on a conference call yesterday with the Waverly School District. They're doing a similar thing. And they want to tie into the club, center down in Finghamton, right, to to expand entrepreneurship in the Waverly area. I think that's a great idea. The kids in Oxford have cut most of the parts for the gearbox for the solar panels. And they're doing a lot of work with Gordy Smith. They've actually been doing some work for Unison, which I think is, you know, it's really cool to have kids see what actually happens. And it gives them connections, you know, it gives them connections to the workplace, right? They've got connected in the Unison now, so it's a great project. And that's with a water jet cutter, which is kind of a full machine. If anybody's ever seen a water jet cutter, they don't care what they cut, right? They cut glass, they cut plastic, they cut metal, they cut wood. It doesn't make any difference. The tech teacher down there had sixth graders making gumball machines out of jars and cutting a wooden gear with a water jet cutter. So that's kind of an interesting thing. I'm going to present tomorrow with Carrie's program on workforce, what I've done with workforce, so manufacturing, right, creating the skills. And I think what you're going to see is it's going to come back as soon as COVID is over. This is going to come back strong because we don't have the people we need. Unidilla Valley Prime School, we've got seven, we've got what, half of the hundred and fifty thousand we need for the prime school. We are struggling to get local support for that. I got half of that from the Corning Foundation. Our companies here, COVID is just not, not confirmed. Even Golden Artists, they were all about getting involved in this project. And because of the shutdowns in Texas of the refining facilities, Golden can't get acrylic, right? The base material to make their paint, they can't get enough acrylic supply. So there are some paints that they've just discontinued right now. There are other packages, you know, how they package paint, they've discontinued some of the different sized packages. So it's just fascinating. When they're in a state like that, nobody talks to you about workforce development, spring schools, or anything. So that's where we're at. I'm actually going to go up this afternoon. There's a company up under Precision Matics. They're interested. So I'm going to go up and visit them this afternoon and look for some funding from that. If we don't get the funding by the middle of June, Corning will probably pull out. Then I'll have to redesign the whole program somehow. That's some of what I've been working on. Been doing a little with the transportation. I've got the kiosk at my pool table room. I'm that's up and running now. So that's what I've been up to. Questions?
Privilege of the floor. George?
There there's an opportunity for for some grants for high-hazard dams. I know Shane is a little bit aware of that. On the the deadline for appliance is pretty tight. I think it's June sixth. What's interesting about it i- is that in order to apply for the grants, one of the the prerequisites is that it's part of a hazard mitigation plan. And and my understanding from what I've read, there there's a couple hundred pages worth of documents I've downloaded and looking at is that that has to be part of the county plan and would involve any high-hazard dams in the county. So while we were looking at potential grant for the Guilford Lake Dam, I don't know how we're going to proceed. I'm going to meet with the engineers or talk with them again today. But it's another one of those programs that there's a very narrow window. I think the announcement was around the sixteenth of April. I found out about it. Probably I'll have to look around the twenty-something of April. But to get everything put together with estimates and that, then once again, when you take a look at the overall requirements, it really may, I I think it looks like it's going to make applying for the grant. I, I think it looks like it's going to make applying for the grant unfeasible. But it's another one of those things that's out there when we have strings attached.
So we have talked toucher tech and the state, and we are trying diligently to get that into our plan this time so that, um, you are, you would be eligible for this round. So we're trying, but it is, it's a lot of work and, you know, when we're almost done with the Hazard Mitigation Plan to find out, oh, hey, by the way, you need to add this section. Um, it was tight.
And my initial discussion with them was that for the town of Guilford, we would do another action plan. And, and it, it's much bigger than that. And, and if that happens, once again, being able to get the grant application in is going to be incredibly tight. Um, not knowing where that's going to be. And, and once again, we have a year supposedly according to, um, D E C to make that change in our Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is really pretty much, I'm going to say finished at this point.
But definitely opportunity for another round, I mean, next year?
There may be, uh, we don't know. But then once again, that would have to be in the plan in order to qualify.
Yeah. If there's anything we know about state grants is that we don't know about state grants, anything in the future.
Carrie, Zach, would you like to add anything? Privilege floor?
Just great to be here. I don't know. Is this working here?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, you can. Good, good. Excellent. Yeah. No, it's great to be here. I found that presentation fascinating. I love the questions that you guys asked, and I'm hoping that, uh, I'm able to bring something to the table. It seems like each of you sort of has experience and knowledge already. I'm kind of lacking some of that. So I just hope I'm useful in some way if you guys will have me.
Glad to have you.
Thank you very much.
Carrie?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't think I have anything else to add. Everything with the I D A, we haven't had anything new come our way recently. We do have an I D A meeting next week. We are meeting in person again, just so you're aware, we were meeting, um, through Zoom the last few months as things were sort of resurging. So third Wednesday of the month, eight AM, our community room. But that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to pull up our two thirty-nine reviews while I'm trying here.
Yeah, if one, so we're on to two thirty-nine.
Okay, so the town of Coventry, uh, is doing a solar wind moratorium, six-month moratorium. Uh, give them a chance to write a local law. I was contacted probably six, eight months ago, uh, by their town board, uh, requesting a copy of our law, uh, which was Guilford's law. So, so they're probably working off of that. They're just getting time to do their changes and go through the regulatory process.
Yeah, we'd gotten a call from the supervisor probably a month or so ago. Um, obviously there is a potential solar project in the town of Coventry. And before it gets to them, they wanted to make sure that their law was pertinent and in place before that was official. So that's why they're doing this.
Can I ask what that does to the, so if this, if this happens, because I know like, right, we've been working with them for a while too. I know they came to us quite a while ago about this. Um, this means that the current project that has been presented to the planning board, because my understanding is they've been there a few times and the planning board itself is going through some changes. Um, does that mean that that project cannot move forward even though it's been presented because it hasn't been approved? This would like put a stop on everything. Is that correct?
That is correct. So basically what this allows the town to do is take a momentary pause. It's not a forever pause. It has to be defined in their law how long they have to do this. So it could be six months. I don't, so it's six months in this one. So the town has six months in order to get this law in place and adopt it so that they can proceed with the application. You always have to have a timeframe. It's got to be reasonable and there's only certain reasons you can do them. So, you know, they're working with an attorney to make sure that they're, you know, going through the proper procedures. But yes, this is absolutely a legal thing that they can do to hold a project. Um, and obviously, you know, yes, they presented the project, but that's the whole point of a moratorium is you have a project you're not ready for. This allows a momentary pause. So obviously you can't do a moratorium if you don't know what the project is going to be. So, um, but yes, this is feasible.
Okay. I wasn't sure if there was any legal ramifications. My, my only concern, and I understand why they're doing this, it's definitely needed. Each community, I think, should have one if they don't. Um, has the company, do we know if the company that was, had been presenting this, did they already purchase the land that they were going to buy for this? And, and not that that's necessarily our issue. I just don't want to be caught in a weird like, well, we did this on good faith because we were told one thing, we purchased the land and now you're putting a moratorium on it. Or do you, do, do we know if the company knows that this is happening? I just want to make sure we're protected.
I don't know for s- for, for sure, but typically the people won't buy or have that agreement in place until they've done their review is what we've seen in the past. Um, but that's not to say that this company didn't do that ahead of time. Um, that, but that's again, that's on them. I mean, typical developers will come in and say, hey, is this allowable to do this before they, um, go through the purchasing of that property?
Right. Okay, just thanks.
So looking at any county concerns, does anybody have any, uh, with the moratorium? Now I'll have a motion to approve. Saka?
Oh, good.
All favor?
Hi.
That's it.
Shane, you've been contacted by the town of Sherman about something solar project.
I have not recently. Um, so I don't believe the town of Sherman has site plan or view. So even if they did have a project, I do remember Ellie Schechter, who I think was the owner, operator of the wind, or yeah, wind, about solar facility. I think it's the same one as Coventry. Um, he's reached out many times and, um, but no, it's because there's not, I think we did a review it.
We did it three days.
Yeah, but I think that was only for the company. It wasn't actually on behalf of the town. Um, he just wanted to, he wanted to make sure that somebody saw it because they've got to go through a certain procedure. I don't think so. I think it came from them. Yeah.
Planning board.
Right. There is no planning board, Sherman, I'm pretty sure.
And I got a call from a guy that was presenting himself as being on the planning board and, and sounded like the planning board was being asked to carry a lot of the, the burden of reviewing a project. And I suggest that the supervisor talk to you. Oh, I don't know. Just curious. Anyway, motion to adjourn? Okay. Thank you very much, everybody.
All right. See you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.